Well, I'm looking at one of our strategic initiatives that we listed. We are in the process of working with the Esteville Municipal Airport. They have their current manager of that airport has been looking to retire and sell his business for probably a year and a half, which is very scary for us. He does all of the maintenance or the majority of the maintenance for all of our planes. And our aviation program has had a drastic increase in in students, which has meant an increase in planes, which means a lot of maintenance and routine oil changes, things like that. So we've been very concerned. We actually have had a few meetings working on a 28E agreement. So we are actually looking to hire aviation mechanic, one and possibly two. But we're looking at a 28E agreement so that individual can take on the role of aviation airport manager. And we're looking at a 28E agreement with the city. So it would be something that would be very beneficial to the college and to our aviation program, but it would also be a big benefit to the city and the municipal airport that we have. So just to give you an idea on aviation program, the last four years, we've seen significant growth. So when I started in in this position in fall of 2001, we were we had increased enrollment and we were at thirty three students. By next the next fall of fall of twenty two, we went to fifty three. And then fall of twenty three, we were at eighty four. So that summer was exciting but scary. We were trying to figure out how we could accommodate all of those students at our Esteville Airport. We actually looked at partnering and having a satellite location at a at a local airport, which was Spencer, but the logistics of that, because students had planned to come to Esteville, wasn't going to work. So we actually worked with a local school district to buy a building that they had used for their shop classes during a renovation. And we were able to move that to our Esteville Airport and accommodate all of our flight instructors and make it work. But this this year, we're at ninety three and we actually have a satellite location at the Spencer Airport. So how we've worked that out is incoming students for this year were recruited to Spencer and our returning students stayed in Esteville. And so students that we're recruiting for this next fall, we're we're recruiting back to the Esteville campus. So we're going to have a cohort at each airport and location. So it's been a lot of fun, but there's been a lot of stress and a lot of people working really hard to make sure that we can accommodate students as they grow. We have also, I know Nyack mentioned starting an aviation program. They they mentioned starting aviation maintenance. We are also looking into that, but we are trying to level off our growth and make sure that we have the facilities to accommodate the students that we currently have before we look into adding that particular program. We also have individuals that are working on a new facility, possibly a new facility at the Esteville Airport. We have a donor who's looking at possibly donating a million dollars. So we're working very hard to develop plans and then we're going to do a capital campaign to see what kind of funds we can raise for a new facility to house and kind of bring back those students from our satellite location more to one location. Knowing that if growth continues, we still have that satellite location, but it is a lot easier with equipment and with instructors to be at one location. So we're really working hard to do that as well. As far as programs, we're looking to phase out our computer programming and game design programs. There are ones that we've really struggled with enrollment and we have a program coordinator that we've been working with to transition to cybersecurity. He's actually been working and has received a master's degree in that area. So we are phasing out those two programs and we are looking at moving forward with cybersecurity. We're also looking at a diploma certificate in IT for like a help desk technician. That's something that our area is very need of, individuals with that skill set. So we're looking at doing that. Our engineering tech also went on hold. Similar to what John had indicated, it's very hard to hire individuals in some of these CTE programs. And that's a program that we've never really been able to get very many students in. We've even had partnerships with area high schools for them to do dual enrollment and actually get their one year of that two-year degree completed, their junior and senior year. And we have it's not really taken off for us. So that program's on hold. We are reevaluating that. Wind energy, we went without instructor for almost an entire year. We had we had two instructors, one left at the end of summer, and we've been working to hire. We just hired an individual with a great skill set. He comes from the wind energy industry, GWO training. We actually have basic GWO training. And so one of our other initiatives is we are going to really ramp up our GWO training and move into the advanced. Our wind energy program enrollment has decreased. A lot of that has to do with industry need. They are looking at hiring technicians. They need people. And so in the past, we were more likely to get students out of high school to come to us first. Sometimes we lose them after year one because they go to an internship and with the skill set that they gain, they were hired by those companies. But now it's really hard to even get them to come because they're so shorthanded, they're hiring them and working to train them themselves. So we're looking at ways we can really help train those individuals once they start in the workforce. So that's another initiative that we are looking at moving forward with wind energy. Our early childhood education program, we're actually looking to move from our Emmitsburg campus to our Esteville campus with the statewide transfer programs. We have added our education transfer degrees and those are housed on Esteville campus. And so we really feel like that's a better location for early childhood to be located with those programs. The variety of arts and science classes that they will be able to take is a benefit to them as well for that program. And we think our student body, our Emmitsburg campus is really CTE program heavy. And our Esteville campus has a lot of our athletic programs and a lot of our different arts and science programs. So we feel like that's a chance for them to grow enrollment with the change as well. So a couple of the highlights for Iowa Lakes, I'll turn it over to Jeff Sopner to talk a little bit about our budgets.
Thanks Scott. Similar to Southeast and Northwest, talking about budget, we've we've been working on putting together a conservative budget. Our enrollment over the last three years has has remained fairly flat after seeing a really big growth in 2021. So for the next year, we've we've planned a flat enrollment change. And we have set our tuition for next year at a three percent increase with tuition and fees going into FY twenty six. State general aid, we had assumed a flat amount or zero amount. So I'm just waiting to hear what would come back from them. And similar to what the other schools have said, with doing this in January, there's a lot of assumptions that still have to get figured out. All right, let me go. So one thing I want to point out, our plant funds, we do show a large decrease in our our total expenditures at three point four million compared to revenues of just over two point three. Most of that is revolving around some roofing projects that we've been doing over the last few years. In 2024, we started replacing some of our aging roofs. We're down to three roofs. The ballpark price for those is around one point two million dollars. In addition to those, we're also facing a gluttony of HVAC units that have been failing on us. They all seem to be hitting about the thirty to forty-year-old range mark and have all decided that they wanted to quit working at the same time. It must be their own retirement plan. So we're constantly having to replace those, some of them ranging up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the large units. Last point I wanted to hit was our bond and interest funds. The one point nine million dollars that we're raising for that falls in line with a twenty one cent valuation. We had advertised to our constituents back in 2016 when we passed the bond. We have not needed the twenty one cents. Our debt payments tend to range in the one point two million dollars, one point two five million. So that those excess funds we've been using to escrow and then pay ahead, we have paid one point two million dollars early so far on those bonds. And our plan is to pay them off about three years earlier than originally scheduled. And that should save our constituents about a hundred and forty thousand dollars in interest expense.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions regarding the budget?
Yeah, one question with the with the revenue side of things. You have other income is over eleven percent of your revenue, which compared with other community colleges, that's on the high side. What's going on at Iowa Lakes? Do you have a lot of funds invested or?
No, so a majority of those other income is the teaching revenue that we receive. As like Northwest had mentioned before, we're also a member of the ICCOC. And a large number of our instructors teach those classes that are shared with other schools. And so then as we our instructors teach students from other schools, we're we're paid a higher percentage of the tuition revenue that is collected to help offset the instructor costs for those. We, since its inception, we've tended to have a slightly higher percentage of the teaching cost, but that's been. They've been working hard to make sure it's been leveled off across all the schools. So it's been dropping over the last few years. But it makes up over fifty percent of that other income cost on our other revenue side.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you see concurrent enrollment as an area of opportunity for you?
So concurrent enrollment is we have a very high penetration into our our local school districts. One of the things that we've really talked about is working to, we convert a lot of those students to Iowa Lakes after they do concurrent enrollment with us. But I feel like there's some school districts where we could do a better job with that. So it is an area that we have those students in front of us and we have the opportunity to really work with them to see a pathway for completion if they come to Iowa Lakes. So that's one area that we really look to focus on. But as far as we have, we have a very high number of students taking concurrent enrollment in our area school districts.
Yeah. And then just looking at the staffing breakdown in table two, 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 three, two, four. So it looks like in total, there's about two hundred and sixty nine professional staff and a hundred and eighty four total faculty. Can you can you speak to the higher proportion of professional staff than faculty?
Yeah, so in that table two, three, I have been emailing because I just noticed we have nobody listed for non-credit faculty. And obviously, we teach non-credit, we teach non-credit training. So that's one question I'm hoping to answer and then work with the DE and our institutional researcher to update. I have been given a list of some names of individuals teaching, but we will look into that and try to update that. I would say the professional staff is just like, that's a really big, that's a lot bigger category for us as far as with all of our student services that we provide and our athletic programs that fall into that as well. Our faculty number has fallen over the last, I don't know, Jeff, probably eight to ten years. And that's a lot due to enrollment that has dropped or just the number of enrollments in classes, a shift to online a little bit. And we have the, we work with the ICCOC consortium, so we have faculty that teach online for us from other colleges that are teaching classes. So a lot of that is just based on enrollment in classes and need for additional instructors to teach classes for us.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Iowa Lakes?
I'm of approval of the Iowa Lakes budget.
Second.
By Brian and second by Mary. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All in the same thumb. Questions carried, budget approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you. All right, Western Iowa Tech.
Yes, we have two more. Western Iowa Tech. With us today will be CFO Troy Jasson. Western Iowa Tech serves just over seven thousand credit students, nearly fifteen thousand non-credit. They are at forty five percent of their students in the concurrent space, tuition at two oh two. And their best practice, they want to highlight was a cross department, cross department team that they have developed to allocate funding for various equipment needs, process, determining equipment needs and pulling out those funds. So thank you for being here. Troy, can you hear us?
I can I can hear you, but for some reason I'm having issues with my video. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I apologize for the video. I'm not quite sure what's going on here. On behalf of Western Iowa Tech, thank you for the time today. And I guess I would start with as we are putting our budget together, as we go about what we do here at the college, we've recently changed what our our mission statement is. And it's to eval, eval, yeah, I'm sorry, elevate our diverse learners and strengthen our communities through inclusive and innovative education. And that's really how we look at our, how we operate here on a daily basis, how we put together our budget going forward. And so one of the things we highlighted was how we put together our cross-departmental team here at the college to look at what equipment needs we see that our students need. And the way that we've done it is we look at all available funding here at the college. We don't have the faculty worry about where is it going to come from, from which pot of money. We 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 look at our equipment monies that we have, we look at any grant dollars that we have, and we put together, then we have a team that will work on that. And that team does not include myself, the CFO, or the college president. We recognize that the individuals that are closest to our students are the ones who know what type of equipment they need for their program, as well as advisory committee members who are telling them through their meetings as far as what do they believe that the students need in order to be relevant to the workplace today. And so through that team, they're able to put together all of their requests. It goes through the process and and I think it's worked very well. We've gotten high praise when we have our accreditation visits as far as how we do that. So that would be one of the things I would say we'd like to highlight. As we look at some of our strategic priorities for FY twenty five, twenty six, the big one for us right now obviously is our Dentistry and Career Academy. And we're very proud of how that has worked well, partnering with the Dentistry and Community School District and some other schools to bring that together. We plan to have that open for this fall. It's been very aggressive, working with our our builder and keeping on top of that has been critical. We're we're real excited about that. Additionally, we are looking at our aviation mechanics program. I know a couple others talked about aviation and and this is one where we have partnered with the Chamber here in town. We've we partner with other businesses, with Morningside University and with our MIRD, which is a Missouri River Historical Development. They have given us a grant of two hundred fifty thousand dollars to secure some of the equipment. So that that is something that we're looking at starting. With the recent changes with the federal government and the FAA, getting that site certified may not happen for this fall. So that will be a program that may have to be pushed a little bit. And then our electrician program expansion. We know that that is an area that there's a great need for people in the CTE program. And so working with our department, we were able to move some things around. And over the summer months, we will be expanding that program so that we can double of the number of students in that program. Again, a lot of what what we're doing here at the college, we have to partner. Whether it's internally, we're partnering with with different groups here or within our city, within our merged area. What we find is whenever we partner, we are more successful than when we're trying to do it alone. And that's that's the key thing here at Western Iowa Tech. No different than next week, we are going to have our open house for our, one of the houses that our construction program built. And we've partnered with the Home Builders Association here in town. They provide the seed money for that. Our students work on that. The home will be sold. I think we're probably in the the twenty eighth home that we've done. And then they will provide some scholarship dollars for our students in the construction program. As far as budget, I've been doing budget here at the college for twenty nine years. I wish I could say it's getting easier every year to do the budget. Unfortunately, it's more challenging each year. But as I go back to our mission statement, I believe our executive council will look at that and say, okay, what can we do with the dollars that we have? We realize that there's not an unlimited source of funds. How do we impact the greatest number of students? How do we impact our community? How do we provide the workforce that the state of Iowa needs? And that's really the impetus that they look at as they prepare their budget. We are deep into the detail budget process right now, going through it line by line. Again, I wish I could say it was balanced. It's not at this point. But it will be because we will provide that to our board, hopefully at their July board meeting. We've been fortunate that we've had some enrollment growth here at the college. Last fall, we were approximately eight percent growth. We, like many of the other colleges, we have the concurrent enrollment. So we're we're working with the high school students. We have the online student through the ICCOC that many of the schools have talked about. We also do a lot of training for business and industry. Our corporate college here at the college has a goal to impact at least seven hundred new individuals each year. And they're right now, I think they're they just hit about seven hundred and fifty two. So we we watch that every week to see where we are with that. And then we also remember that there's another segment of our population, which we call our lifelong learners. And we have a very robust program with that too, because we know that that group sometimes maybe feels a little bit left out. That group's very active here at the college. If you would come to our wellness center on a Tuesday or Thursday, you'll see approximately eighty individuals that do what we call stretch and flex. And so they are making sure that they can remain mobile. And we've had several individuals who have celebrated their eightieth, ninetieth birthday here at the college with that program. So we're quite proud of that as well. I I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Iowa West, Western Iowa. Just an observation, the low side of the Biden for state funding per pupil. It seems like it's very subtle. Are no other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion by Cindy, second by Brooke, to approve Western Iowa Tech's community college budget. Those in favor in the getting, saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Questions carried. Congratulations.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, it's bringing home Iowa Central.
Yes, for our last presentation, President Jesse Orick, CFO Angie Martin are joining us. I know Angie, at least Angie is in the room. And then President Orick was attending a pinning ceremony, I know, right before this. So but so Iowa Central serves six thousand, just over sixty one hundred credit students. And on the non-credit side, just under nine thousand students. Thirty five percent of those cred, credit students are concurrently enrolled. Their tuition is around two hundred and twenty four. And as a best practice, they highlighted their review of low-interest programs. It's quite beautiful. Well, folks here now, thank you for joining us.
Well, good evening, everyone. In full disclosure, I'm in a closet in my parish for my five o'clock meeting that's going to happen. So I hope and I'm really happy that you all saved the best for last, so. Okay, Amy, would you like me to kind of go over our strategic priorities for this?
Yeah, that would be great.
All right, fantastic. So this year, we launched several new programs at Iowa Central. Included in those was an online computer networking technology revamp of that program, as well as dental assisting diagnostic medical sonography, which is ultrasound tech. Also, we did an information and cybersecurity revamp of programming. We added plumbing. We also launched a veterinary tech program. And then also a cosmetology program, and that's in partnership with La James. By no means are we planning on creating a cosmetology program. But within our region, what we have is a need for more cosmetologists in rural Iowa. It's an expensive program to get going and we already have a private institution in our region doing it. But they can't necessarily get into the high schools like we can. So we have a great partnership with them to be able to get them those courses offered by La James within our high schools. During the November referendum, we'll be going out to our public to, for about thirty five million to update our master facility plan, as well as creating a center for ag science here on on campus as we try to create a new, new age learning space to be able to house all of our ag, ag science type of programming. We also want to continue in the investment in our president's Leadership Academy. We'll be going into our third year where we take about fifteen of our potential leaders on campus and they meet monthly. And we go through some leadership training as well as Community College one oh one. So that when we have succession planning needs and when we have open positions within our system, we have folks who are not necessarily at square one, but that we've been training along the way. This will be year four out of five for our strategic plan. So now all of our thirteen groups that are involved with the governance model that we have here at Iowa Central are starting to feel the heat on looking at their to-do list and looking at their their strategic outcomes that they've been assigned to, to determine what are the next priorities for the next two years to be able to complete. Staff and faculty evaluation practices, procedures and resources updated to reflect a commitment to personnel and professional growth through a coaching model. We have the very archaic faculty system where once out of every three years, we go in, we do one classroom observation and the evaluation is based off of that. We want to change that model to more of a coaching model on continuous improvement and growth mindset for our faculty and for our staff. So that'll be a major area that we're focusing on this year. And then always, we're we're talking about graduation, completion and retention was always going to be an area at Iowa Central. We did have, two years ago, we did have our highest graduation rate at about forty six percent that we've had in over twenty five years. We we put a lot of that in part to some of the student services structures that we've been changing within the college to make sure that all of our professional support staff are as close to our students as possible. And she told me only five or six, but my seventh that I would add, we are very, very pleased and happy with the Department of Education or with our CAF grants that we've been receiving for our career academies. We received another one to have our transition of closing down our restaurant that's on a golf course and be able to sell that property to where our culinary department will be able to be completely the restaurant on campus, which will not only better serve our students, but also better serve our community members as as they're on campus and participating in those menu options. And with that, I think I will kick it over to Angie Martin to be able to talk anything specifically about the budgets for highlights.
Oh, sure. Thank you for having us. We do take a conservative approach with our budget. Enrollment, as I'm sure you probably have heard throughout these other community colleges and or are aware of, drives our general unrestricted budget as we're, our tuition and fees is a large portion of our revenue for that fund. With that, we did budget a three percent increase, around a three percent increase for our tuition and also we budgeted even enrollment. And then our, on the expense side, our salary benefits are around seven, a little over seventy percent of our expenditures for our general unrestricted fund. And with that, our full-time salaries or pay is around three point two five percent and our health insurance was around four percent increase. So those are the big, the big chunks of our budget. And then our unrestricted, or excuse me, our restricted fund is dependent upon grants. But we are, we have some out there that we are waiting to hear on, so it depends on if we get those. But we are, we have some out there that we are waiting to hear on, so it depends on if we get those. Also, we are, we budgeted a potential 260E bond sale for next year. And then our Fund VII is primarily focused on our construction projects, which Dr. Ulrich mentioned some of those. But we're finishing up some and we finished up some exciting ones. We were able to get our Stormlight Learning Center completed and opened this past fall. And that, one of the contributions to that was the Care Academy incentive grant. So we're very thankful for that, as he mentioned. And so what that does is put our Stormlight students all on one campus instead of, do we have three? Do we have three locations? And so that was really nice to put us all on one location. We also opened our fuel testing lab building this year, which is great for our community and area and state. And then we also renovated our Center for Performing Arts. And that was another big thing for our community. Based on our location, we have to drive to get to some events. And so we're hoping to bring some locally for our community, as well as provide a great space for our students. So when they have to go from the front of stage to the back of stage and so forth, they're not having to run outside as they had prior. So that was a huge improvement for them and our program. So that is, and our, most of our projects are funded through bond sales for our plant funds. So that is a summary of that. And we did, you know, as I mentioned at the beginning, we did take a conservative approach to our budgeting, so. And if you guys have any questions or if you want any more details, I would be happy to share anything.
I will beat it to the punch on the question. We currently do not classify our, our non-instructional staff as faculty. And that's why we do not label them in the faculty category. They're not on faculty contracts. They're on professional support contracts.
And President Ulrich, just to follow up to that, it appears as though you have some of the lowest staffing levels for clerical staff or secretarial duties that are quote secretarial in nature. Can you speak to that strategic model?
Yeah, it, I wish it was different, but we're one of the five lowest when it comes to the winners and the losers of our current funding model. You know, our, our current funding was about, I believe, close to $3,000 per student. When the previous community college to our north that you just heard from is over 6,000. You know, so we have been far behind. So we have been lean in the clerical area. We did increase that, believe it or not, we did increase that three years ago. When, when I first came to Iowa Central, not a single dean had a clerical support. You know, so we restructured to where we added a lot of administrative assistance to be able to provide the support to our faculty, because I want deans being able to support our faculty, not stuffing envelopes. And not, that's not to devalue the, the important work that administrative, administrative assistants do. But when we're prioritizing, prioritizing our resources, we are trying to do as, as much as possible with student, with professional support staff who directly deal with students.
It also looks like from page six in your total revenue breakdown that you have one of the highest proportion of breakdown as tuition and fees. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, I, Dr. Ulrich, I'll start and then I'm going to turn over to you since you've been on that team. So as Dr. Ulrich mentioned, we are one of the colleges that receive a smaller percentage or per student amount of state generally. So the funding formula back, I think it was like in the 90s or something, Iowa Central is at a really low enrollment. And a lot of that funding was based on that enrollment at that point. From there, Iowa Central's enrollment just went up. We did a lot of initiatives and really served our community well. And the state general aid did not support that. And so we've had to be, as you mentioned, we've had to be lean in a lot of areas. And unfortunately, our services and all of that have been on the backs of our students due to the state general aid amount that we've been receiving. So I want you to talk more about that.
Yeah, moving forward, our strategic plan there is with the new funding formula model that has been developed by the presidents, we will be getting a bigger percentage over the next foreseeable future. Last year and this coming year, as far as funding, 50% of the new funds coming into the state will go to those five, five community colleges who are below the state average, us being one of them. We are going to be, we are going to be taking a tuition recommendation that's less than 3%, you know, to our board next week, based on the preliminary numbers that we're hearing of the state budget to be able to try to hold that down as much as possible, you know, as, as we, you know, as we move forward. What I would also say that is very different about Iowa Central compared to other community colleges in the state is we are truly a mini university. You know, we have a pedestrian campus. We have 57 buildings across our nine counties. So we, we are not a commuter campus type of field. And thus that, that is less efficient, you know, but a better college experience. And that's why so many of our students, we're the number one community college of choice in the state. We not only keep the most percentage of students within our region here, but we have the biggest draw from around the state because we have that mini university feel that students want. And what's wonderful about that though is half of our students are career and technical education students and half of our students are transfer students, but they all get the same high quality college experience.
Just to note, you are the lowest, I guess you would say, 8% of your budget. Congratulations. But the other part of that is with, I was just looking at the in-state tuition for FY '25. You were saying a few dollars of one of the highest receiving state aid in, in the state as far as tuition. So you're, even though your state aid is low, you've been able to keep your tuition competitive, which is kudos to you guys.
We appreciate that. And part of the reason we're able to do that is we have the most athletic programs in the entire nation. We have 33 athletic programs on campus. So we are drawing a lot of students to Iowa Central to supplement our tuition for everyone else with students who are participating in those activities. You know, of the 6,000 students that we serve, a little over 6,000, you know, about 1,000 of them are student athletes. But what's still wonderful about that is of the students who graduate from Iowa Central, 77% are staying in our region. So we've really been able to capitalize them coming to our region, being able to see the high quality of living that we have here and be able to stay in the business and industries that are also helping train them.
Is there agreement as to how the half of the state aid is being, how the presidents agreed as to how that's divided among the lower five? Or is that a year-to-year thing or pro-rata? Or how do you do that?
Yeah, that is a year-to-year agreement that we've chosen to do. We, we did a two-year agreement on that. And then what we've been researching over the past couple of years is state models of funding from other, from other states and what would fit within our state. And what we've really come on to is we're changing the model to be more driven on FTEE rather than just, well, what did you get last year and let's add to that? Because that's what got us in this mess that we're currently in. So going forward, the community college funding mechanisms will be more aligned to FTEE. That's splitting out the new money rather than just historically going with what they received before.
Is there a thought that you would go 100% that way as opposed to half?
No, and, and why I say no is we want to be respectful and, and also observe, you know, all 15 community colleges have different needs. They serve different populations. They serve different geographies. But all 15 community colleges are still required to do the same comprehensive services for their region. So if we were to just go where, hey, you know what, the five below are going to get all the money this year and best of luck to everyone else, all that's going to do is drive up tuition across the state. And since we're already nationally above the state, state average, we need to be mindful of that. I think all of us, the, you know, by the way, the 15, you know, community college presidents, it was a unanimous decision on how we chose to do this, which is exactly opposite of what it was 15 years ago where it was split. So they're very mindful of making sure that we bring equity to the table in regards to how we split the new money.
President Ulrich, you mentioned FTEE, so FTE expenditures, like per pupil expenditures in K-12 is for a reference point. Full-time equivalent? Not full-time employee. I think folks are getting that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, student, student FTEE. That's, that's the term that's on the spreadsheet in community college. I used to be a superintendent, so I'm probably having PTSD. I'm just going back.
Any further questions for Iowa Lakes? Excuse me, Iowa Central.
Those are great words.
Oh my goodness. Oh no.
I'm, I move, I move that we approve the budget.
For Iowa Central.
For Iowa Central.
Oh, a mistake I've ever made. It's been the last half hour.
Yeah, right.
I think you did it twice.
Yeah, you called one of the other, another name, yeah.
All right, so.
I move nobody's second.
We both did.
Oh.
Okay, so they, okay.
All right, it's been moved by Brian and second by Cindy to approve the budget for Iowa Central. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign. Motion carried. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your service. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
What else do you want to talk about today?
Thank you.
Yeah, for all of our, a lot of work.
Yes. And just one question. When is all of the information sent by?
So it's due until April 50th. That's the really tricky part. It used to be March 15th, but then law was changed to give them more time to submit their certified budgets. So certified budgets are due April 30th, but our board has to approve it by June. So we have like a two-week window. Next year, we're going to start all that we can much earlier, because we can do some of the informational earlier. This week, we, we're together in like two weeks, but.
I don't know if there's value in considering moving our two-day retreat to May, so we can do half of this on Thursday and half on Friday, half on Wednesday, half on Thursday, just to break it up instead of April.
Yeah, we could all, we also had a full half-day agenda and then they, we could also look at lightening the morning moving forward for, for these such days. But yes, we're happy to explore multiple actions. Appreciate that this was a very robust agenda.
15 budgets is a lot in one day.
I agree. I agree. I won't be here next year though. So thank you, everybody, for all your work. I won't be here next year. Turn, correct?
Turn.